Work session, it is 5:00 PM, a little after 5:00 PM. And as a record show, all councilors are here with the exception of Mr. Heslop. I think he who is listening to this may be. So tonight, we get to receive a presentation and discuss the comprehensive plan updates project. John, I'm going to turn it over to you now.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. I can't call you Charlotte while we're officially in a meeting.
Please, call me John.
So anyway, I'm glad we can be here this evening, especially glad over the last year-plus, the city moving through getting this project even to this point. I know that y'all have been engaged with, I nearly said Paul, with Mr. Stevens on getting us to this point. Everything was pretty much finalized October, November. We've been working with staff. We had a great staff meeting first of December where we basically went through the stuff that we're going to go through today. On that, for that meeting, we had the luxury of three eight-hour days. And so we're really going to condense it down. And at times, we're going to be flying pretty high. I would ask that if you have any questions, just jot those down, just because we're going to be flying pretty high and it's a lot of information that we have to give you. The last, the second hour will be very interactive. And so at that point, we'll be going back and forth for an hour to hear and see what y'all might have to say. So that's the last 60 minutes, it's called asset mapping. Let me introduce myself. I'm Ron Stewart. I've been around Highland Village, let me see, my daughter's 32, so for 31 years. And lived right down the street from where the old swimming pool used to be, now the tennis complex. And have had the joy and privilege of raising all my kids here. And for 20 years was working, I'm sorry, 17 years under the banner of GNA consultants. We've done tons of projects in Highland Village. And under the environs group name, which was the landscape division, we did 2499 and the Veterans Memorial and the fire station for the landscape. The list of GNA projects is too long to go over, but probably half the buildings along 407 and a bunch of the other projects around town. So we've been here for a while and we feel very privileged that we were selected to work with staff and y'all on the comp plan. I'm going to introduce a few people on our team. Randy is our planning director. She lives right here in Highland Village, grew up in Flowermount or were you in Dublin? Yeah. And then Ashton is on our planning team and he grew up in the area. What, did you graduate from high school or did you?
No, I graduated, Liz, from high school.
He did graduate, right? I was going to say. I'm glad that you graduated.
And he's been with us for a year and a half, two years. And then next to him is Megan Hatcher. She is a team leader in our landscape division and she's been with GNA for four or five?
Almost five.
Okay, almost five years. And we have a whole additional group of people working on this project. Our corporate office is in North Carolina. We have three, I think three people from North Carolina on the Zoom meeting in case I stumble or have, y'all have questions that I may not be able to answer. And then there's, I think our team working on this is around 20 people to keep us moving along. So with that, I want to let you know, if you go to the next slide, Lori, please.
Yes.
We're going to kind of fly through the introduction and process review. And then Randy is going to talk about the various components of the comp plan. And then Ashton is going to discuss our community engagement program. I know that was something from our last HVBA meeting. I got to talk with several of y'all and there were a couple of questions on community engagement, making sure that we are, have a robust project or program for that. And then our last part is the asset mapping exercise. So on the review, if we can go, you can just fly through the next slide.
No, is it possible you could move to this side?
Sure.
Folks in North Carolina can't hear very well.
Oh, is the speaker through the laptop? Could I commandeer this in order? So let's go to the next slide. And so we're going to talk about the planning process and then the next slide. And y'all are probably familiar with this. It was really clear in Paul's public releases and in the RFQ that the city prepared. But there are several different aspects that we are using on this project. But the process that we're doing is a lot of community contacts and demographics, market studies. On February the 25th is our first citywide public engagement meeting. And I'm going to, we'll talk about that a little bit later. And we've already met with staff. We have multiple other staff meetings. We're going to look at that here in just a little bit. We are about 80% through with all of our GIS information gathering for us to use as we move ahead. And then the next part is bringing all of this together, what the community says, what you guys, what you people are going to say this evening. And additional staff meetings, break out with some of the different staff sectors, meeting with Tech dot, the county, I want to meet with Andy, Andy Eads, our county commissioners for this area. We're meeting with Flowermount in Lewisville because of our adjacencies and how we can tie what we're doing together with them. And then we start putting all that together, come up with some of our best ideas, narrow it down through staff interaction. And then we start going into the final product. And once we start narrowing it down, we'll meet with y'all again. And then of course, at the end, we'll bring the final product to y'all because y'all will need to vote on that in order to implement it.
Next slide.
So I alluded to this, the different aspects, and Randy is going to go into this in much more detail, so we're still flying high. But it's the Parks and Rec Open Space Master Plan. And Mr. Lozano is here. He's been very engaged with our team on that. And also on the next sector, which is the trail system and master plan update. So those two things, we're analyzing what the city has, what are high points, what are some areas that might need improvement. Paul has done an excellent job on keeping records of all the cost and maintenance. So we want to look at, look at that and help make projections for the future in order to, not only any new ideas that we may come up with, but how to keep the parks in the great shape that they currently are. And then a area that I'm leading up is the Village Connection. You may have recalled the name in the original, is the FM 407 Trail Corridor and Amity Plan Update. We wanted something that would relate to the community a little bit better and not be so long. And so we've started some of our field review, our GIS work, and then we'll look at some various options for along there and then some final conceptual work. The, the opportunities and constraints on that are pretty high. And talking with staff, we're really looking at it long-term as things develop and redevelop along 407. So we'll get into that a little bit more. And then Randy is heading up the opportunity area plans. And as you might recall from the RFQ, that's all the different vacant tracks in town. Just from when that went out till now, there's been progress on several of those sites. The major empty ones are still work in progress, but Randy will be talking about that a little bit more. And then the Thoroughfare Plan Master Update, it's mainly how your current Thoroughfare Plan relates to the rest of the comp plan as we move ahead, particularly with the Village Connection and the Opportunity Area Plans. And then secondly, we're looking at under trails, any road right-ofways or not right-ofways, but the actual streets that might have some additional striping for bike lanes or one of the components, and Paul has probably addressed this with you, is with our new, it's not golf cart, but anyway, the golf cart coordinates. What does that mean today and what does that mean in the future? Okay. Okay, for y'all, what? Okay, for y'all, what is y'all's role? And it's definitely bringing your ideas and thoughts into the process. And we're going to talk about that tonight as we move ahead because this isn't our project. This is the city's project. Y'all have already voted on this. So we want to make sure that, that y'all can leverage everything moving ahead and keeping us on track, but also the enthusiasm with, with our great city. There are two programmed public engagement ones. I know that y'all already put in a lot of time as council people, but we would like for y'all's engagement in those. First one is from 10:00 in the morning till 7:00 at night. So obviously, we're not asking you to commit all of that time, but showing up. And Lori will be managing our Bang the Table interaction with the community. And so it'll be, we'll be taking pictures and everything. So I think it'd be nice as we take pictures and then post them on Bang the Table that the people know this isn't our project. It's not Paul's project. It's not the staff's project. It's the city's project whom y'all represent.
Ron, if you don't mind, when you mentioned that first public engagement, just, just to be clear, he gave a long timeframe there. That's not an all-day event for everyone to attend. It's really a come and go. So, you know, so often you may have a meeting at night. The only people that can come are those that have that availability. So this way, people throughout the day would be able, be able to attend and participate.
Right, like maybe some of our older population or maybe there's some single parents that have time during the day, people that may not be working. So we want to meet their schedules because their evenings may be, may be booked. But also for our working population, we want to make sure we have an opportunity to hear them, like after work or whatever. And, and then the final part is reviewing and we have a special meeting for the review process and then the adoption process. Okay. And Randy will take over for me.
Good evening. All right, thank you everyone for having us. The planning components, this is a pretty, I mean, this is a meaty, meaty plan. We've covered a lot of stuff in here. We're going to cover a lot of stuff throughout the next several months. And so it does take a team of professionals, like Ron was saying, about 20 of us. So there's the different planning components. Ron mentioned five of them. So I want to jump in. Can I go to the next slide, please? The first one, and there might be a little bit of redundancy, so I'm going to try to breeze past those so we can go into the fun part, which is asset mapping. Okay, the first planning component section is the Parks, Rec and Open Space Plan. And here we've identified, when we create a plan like this, how is it beneficial to the city? What is, you know, what are the goals? We're going to work on defining those goals, but how can the plan be used to benefit the city? And these are some examples. And we want to incorporate these into the plan as we work through this process. So a lot of it is, will include prioritizing the goals and the objectives that come out of the stakeholder input, meetings with neighbors, interviews that we do, the public hearings. We'll also have a 10-year work plan. That's what we believe the horizon you're on this Parks and Open Space Trail Plan to be is 10 years. And then it will help give, you know, the Parks and, Park Staff, Department, a 10-year working plan to, to use and go through, you know, to make decisions based on the goals and objectives that come out of a lot of the community input that we have. It will help validate those decisions. We'll look for funding resources for state and federal. And it kind of just, it creates unity around what are we doing here with the Parks and Rec Open Space Plan? So that's, those are the benefits there. You go to the next slide, please. Okay, oh, back one. Yeah, okay. So these are, again, those four stages that Ron mentioned in a broad introduction a while ago. So the Parks and Rec process here, we're in this green box still looking at, we did the site visit early on. Now we're doing the demographic analysis. And the GIS Parks Program, Operation Finance Assessments, all that is being worked out right now. Community engagement's coming up. But this will, this is kind of where we're sitting on all of the different planning components. We've had a lot of information together. And so that, like Ron's saying, GIS is about 80%. And so there's a lot of things to really, to evaluate before we go to the next step, which is the community engagement and synthesizing that. The vision and goals section, you know, we're talking about what are the gaps in the, the system? You know, if we compare that to nationwide, you know, when we do the evaluation, what are some gaps that we have in our Parks and Open Space Systems? We'll do that through the visioning and goals and identifying the guiding principles. And these principles help kind of create, you know, things that are proposed in the plan if they, they need to adhere to these principles. These are things that the community, the public agrees on that has come out of the themes from the public input meetings. The recommendations for our Parks and Rec Plan will be based on these best practices for achieving the goals. And how do we put these, how do we tie these recommendations to our local values? And then drafting those master parks, master plan recommendations, bring it back to the council for their consideration and input. And then from there, the action implementation. This is, let's put the plan into action. These are grounded in the community's values and guiding principles. The recommendations here are refined into strategies and action items. We're going to prioritize them, short-term, midterm, long-term. The things that receive higher priority will, will, let's see, they'll be supported by significant community input. So those are big items that most of the community agrees on. Those will have a higher ranking. And so that's what we want to do is prioritize what those objectives are based on community input, input from stakeholders. And then have another work session and actually adopt the plan. All right. Then, these are the chapters that will generally be the content, that will generally be in the Parks and Open Space Plan. I'm not going to go into a whole lot of detail here, but Parkland, Parkland and Facilities will evaluate and do a site assessment of the city's parks, existing parks, and provide a summary of the realities, the opportunities and challenges and the current conditions. And then the programming part, which is pretty fun, will offer an in-depth perspective of program and service offerings. It'll help identify the strengths and challenges and opportunities regarding recreational programming. And so the other chapters and content in the plan will include operation, maintenance, and speak to that in real detail to help staff. And then finances and budget, again, continuing to work through that to provide a roadmap for, for staff and council moving forward. All right, the second planned component is the Trails Master Plan. And so we're currently in the first phase of the planning process. Again, in the green box, all these planning components are. And we are the existing conditions inventory here in this inventory analysis section. It's going to summarize the opportunities and constraints and it will outline how to strengthen the trails network and opportunities to expand it, as well as shortcomings of the existing network and challenges for the trail development. And so, again, GIS, we're still working through. I'll show you all on a map here in a second that we've prepared. We reviewed the plant, the existing plans and policies of the city and how those, you know, how those help inform. And maybe some revisions we'll talk through also as we go through this recommendations section on many of these planning components and propose revisions to the city's plans and policies. All right, the next phase of the planning process is the blue box for the Trails Master Plan and it's going to focus on the visioning and goals. And it's going to be created in partnership with staff, working closely with them. The third phase will focus on the recommendations, which include the trail expansion and maybe possibly an on-street bicycle network. The project team will also provide design guidance for network recommendations. So that'll include an overview of trail, facility types and intersection treatments. But through community input, we will determine, again, the priority, project prioritization that's really important. So we'll have criteria that will be established on how do we rank these different components? Just like on the Parks and Open Space with the Trails Master Plan, how are we ranking this input? Having that criteria on how to do the ranking and then we actually rank them and then we have our list of priorities. And lastly, we'll draft the policy and wayfinding, sorry, policy and branding and wayfinding recommendations. And then this last one, we're doing cost estimates of the, you know, from the recommendations, what are the cost estimates of each of the recommendations that are provided for? We'll create the trails plan and refine it, provide implementation strategies and roles for staff, and then funding resources. All right. Here is the updated, this is from the GIS information that we got and preparing a map to show the trail network, existing bicycle and pedestrian facilities. And here's the, kind of the, the work that we've done so far, observations that have been made. Our trail system is well-maintained. We were, we use it all the time. We're very aware of that. And so it's a great trail system for Highland Village. It's something that we're very proud of. So we want to have the plan that focuses on closing any trail gaps, identifying them and closing them and creating those connections. And how do we expand and anything that we need to do from an ADA standpoint? So we're continuing to work through these as we talked about. A lot of stuff to absorb. And then these will be the next steps is complete that existing conditions analysis and creating the opportunities, constraints, and then work towards the other boxes that we showed in the previous slide, plan, visioning and goals. All right. So the Village Connection is the, is a trail that Ron mentioned across all of 407 from east, east side of the city to the west side of the city. I don't know how many miles that is right now. Ron, do you know how many miles that is?
I had it calculated, but I don't recall right now.
So we're, again, in the inventory and analysis stage on that planned component. We also have slated to do interviews with some of the property owners along the trail corridor to get their input, some of the challenges that they've experienced, some of the things that they would like to see. But just kind of an assessment of their perspective there. And so the, the next step would be creating the visioning and goals based on the community input, again, synthesizing all the stakeholders' input. You know, Ron mentioned meeting with the city of Lewisville and Denton County, you know, and TechStot as well for intersections and everything. So how do we take all that input, you know, to create these goals and guiding principles? And we want to really focus on, you know, and this is, again, the city's plan. But, you know, for the vision and goals, we want to talk to the public in the community engagement section is how do we promote development and redevelopment along this trail corridor? Could we possibly bring in some more trail-oriented developments to help enhance the trail experience, to bring in different types of businesses? How can we use the trail system to create a sense of place? We believe the trails in Highland Village make the city unique. So how can we do that along 407, which is our exterior face? It has a very strong presence there with the traffic along the corridor. So how can we create that identity, a very strong identity for that amenity? And then the trail system along 407, the Village Connection, being accessible by other modes of transportation. So we're looking for input for what, what should the goals be on this Village Connection? What should the vision be? And so we will gather that input during the community engagement, public workshops. And from there, the recommendations, you know, how is this Village Connection connected to other trail networks? And how can it be designed in a way that's cohesive? And maybe there's a certain brand or look along, you know, trail intersections and some, we'll provide those cross-sections in the plan. And focusing on nodes along the corridor, what could be amenitized along there for an enhanced experience? Draw people in and help bring in, you know, just attract maybe more businesses that are focused on pedestrians or, you know, that, that is such an attractive feature for an experience that that business wants to provide. Maybe it's more patio restaurants. Policy and branding and wayfinding along the trails. This will tie into the name, the Village Connection. It will have a look that is similar to, you know, to Highland Village. And just what is that input from the community on what that looks like? And what are we, what are we branding? What are we wayfinding? One of those recommendations there. And very similar to the other two components that we talked about, the implementation strategies and roles, cost estimates for the corridor. And, you know, is it a phased approach? Just how do we tackle it? We need a roadmap. This is what this is going to be is the roadmap. And then available funding. Can I go to the next one, please? On the Village Connection, what we've done so far is, you know, a site visit and one of those late November, rapid Thanksgiving, probably December, got in a bus with staff and drove around. It was a two-day thing. We did, we looked at the, all the, the whole corridor, really. And some of the things we've identified is there's limited pedestrian access and space constraints. And I think these pictures really show some of those challenges. And I think we're all aware when we drive it every day. And there's a lot of existing infrastructure and utilities to work around, not just the below-ground stuff that we want to try to minimize impact or encroachment, but also the above-ground. And even things such as transformers, we talked about that. We've been talking about it for a little bit. But, you know, we have to work around that with the trail corridor. So that's some things that, those are things that we're bringing into the map to ensure that we don't create conflicts. And the plan will focus on creating the network connections that we talked about, those amenity areas in the ADA we talked about in the previous slide. And this is the work that we've completed so far or in the process of completing. Again, it's a lot of information, that site inventory, there's a lot of data to create the basement for it. And the next steps is, once the data's there and maps are, you know, kind of set, now it's time to complete the existing conditions analysis. And that'll identify the constraints and opportunities that we talked about. Some of those appear, but, you know, what are they and how can we work around those? What are some solutions? And, and then again, we'll take that to the public and have that discussion, community engagement. And then collect the owner and stakeholder input. So the next slide, please, Lori. Okay, the opportunity areas, it's okay. A little jumpy. Okay, so as Ron mentioned, this is, this is the fourth one, the fourth planned component. It's very similar, a lot of this really mirrors the 407 Trail Corridor process because it's basically a site analysis. And that's what we're doing here and getting input from stakeholders. And so we've done the site visits. The GIS is what we're working on. So in the RFQ, it was like 78 acres, I think, is what added up to be the available land. And since then, it has kind of expanded a little bit. And we're a little over 100 acres of land utilizing in the opportunity areas. So it's like doing a, you know, a site constraints map on each of those individually. So they each have their own kind of nuances. We are preparing the suitability analysis, meeting tomorrow about that with staff. And then owner and stakeholder input is next. We've also identified several property owners within these opportunity areas that we would like to speak to and get their input. You know, some of the things that we've been aware of is potential developers come in, they talk to those property owners, they have an idea and it doesn't happen for whatever reason. And so we want to speak to that owner and listen to some of the challenges that he has heard from potential developers that have come in and looked at his property, his her property. And then a market assessment. So we have a draft market assessment prepared by Catalyst Commercial. They're our marketing consultant. They've prepared this showing the, kind of the vacancies of retail and office within Highland Village. And I think offices at 10% vacancy and then retail is at 5%. Retail's really strong for our city, which is great. That's very exciting news. And the market, the draft market assessment so far justifies that. And then, so there are some things that it's identified, some projects that are going on in the area that impact the viability of new projects in Highland Village due to that proximity. And so we're working with Catalyst to refine that plan, look at everything, office, retail, hospitality, you know, residential, just what, what is our market looking like today for Highland Village and in a regional context? And what's realistic that could be brought to the city and be supported from a market standpoint? So again, that's preliminary findings on that. So the market assessment will help inform the plans that we create with the community on the different uses and developments that could be potentially realized on these properties. So we want to stay realistic. That's what we've got the market assessment for, is to, to keep our feet on the ground. All right, and the vision and goals section, what are some goals? You know, we want to identify that with the community, property owners, stakeholders and city staff. What are the goals for the different development options? I think we went through that exercise with staff about a month and a half ago, just, you know, what are some preferences that we would like to see on some of these tracks? We want to develop concept scenarios based on all these findings. And so we have planned to prepare two concept scenarios for each opportunity area, and we have six of those, six areas. And then we definitely want to strive, based on the market assessment, strive on the highest and best use based on those conditions. And we think too, through the visioning and goals section or process, that when we engage with the community and we listen and we collaborate, that there will be discussion around the, you know, the bringing in, you know, property tax, bringing in sales tax, what is that relationship, how does it benefit the city? Because we want to help the city to create these plans that are financially responsible, you know, long-term, build out. We want to create, help create a vision and option for how the city could be in a good position financially. So from the vision and goals, and we do the recommendations, so that, one of the things that is a little bit different with this component than the others is, when we develop the two concept scenarios here, we're going to bring those to council, or we're going to have a charrette with the stakeholders on those two concepts, and then we're going to refine it and bring this preferred concept of each of the six areas back to council, and have a very probably in-depth discussion on what these concepts are, why they work, why we're proposing them, what input from the community supports these, what input from the market assessment supports these, and get direction from the leadership. Based on that, either we refine it, you know, just however we can massage this we can, and then do cost estimates to help the city and, you know, potential developers or partners understand, you know, what these concepts will end up, you know, requiring in order to develop. And then from those recommendations, are there things in the code and the, on the land use plan, are there any zoning amendments that are needed? Do we need to update, or what portions of the comprehensive plan need to be updated to accommodate this preferred concept? And then based on the determination of this, a fiscal impact analysis will be prepared to show the financial implications of these concepts to the city.
So Randy, that's like how it affects the tax, or increased tax base?
Yes, yes, yeah. Financial implications, benefits, I mean, it's not, it better not be negative, we don't want it to be negative. And so that's the reason we're doing it, is, you know, we're doing a market assessment to paint, to show us what, where we're at right now, you know, and I thought that was interesting, the 10% vacancy for office, I thought it was higher. I just thought it was higher, because driving around and you see it, and you hear people, you know, say about market rents or office rents and everything, and it's consistent with what's in the area, and I was, I was pleased, very pleased to see that, so we're very competitive, which is great. And so, you know, we want to start off being realistic, and then, okay, then we come up with these plans based on city input, community input, and then what is it, what is it going to do to the city's budget? Well, you know, because the whole purpose of doing this exercise is, when we build out as a city, where are we going to be financially? Because we do not want to put ourselves in any kind of, I guess, position to where we're not doing well, right? And we all have to answer to our stakeholders. And then implementation and action plan here is, you know, how do we implement this? Is it through creating an overlay? That's one avenue, like creating an overlay district. What are some changes that are required for maybe not just the comprehensive plan and the zoning ordinances, but other codes in the city that we need to look at, and whose responsibility to do some of those things? And identifying some possible developer partnerships. I know there's a lot of cities that are actively kind of marketing some sites to developers and trying to select the best one to move forward, whatever that plan may be. So identifying those in this, in this section here. Go to the next one, please. So this is the overall map that we're honing in on and refining. We're also going to create individual maps of each, each of the six areas. So altogether, the acreages are on here, but it's a little over 100, and we want to call the northern one a northern gateway, because it's our entrance coming in from Denton Current. And then here in the marketplace area, the IHOP is no longer a part of it, we have, we want to look at this additional pad site over at the shops, and that's about two and a half acres, so, and this, you know, there are some, Scott, there are some applications in for those two. And then we work our way to Barnett, the vacant piece is there, we understand there's been some interest, we're familiar with that. And then over behind the Remax House and Paintery, and then on the north side of the railroad tracks is this vacant piece up here, and then this is Selmair, Goodie Goodie and Legends, and the east side is Selmair, too. And then our eastern gateway, over off of 35, and the potential there, which is a very exciting piece, because it is our, our face on the highway. There's options there, there's definitely options, we're looking at that one, too. So this is the map, we'll be able to zoom in more detail of each of these areas as we do our suitability analysis. We're looking at topo and infrastructure, access is a challenge on some of these sites, visibility, adjacency, we need to be very sensitive to adjacencies on many of these infill pieces. Go ahead and go to the next one. So what we've done so far, we looked, a lot of them are infill, adequate utilities and access, Barnett's a little challenging on access, and then adjacency, some of these, like the ones over by Marketplace, are anticipated to probably develop as the status quo in that area. And we've seen some vacancies, I think we counted up about five vacant spaces over at the Selmair Center, where the Donut Place is, and the...
Club 407.
Club 407, hasn't been the move since.
You've been here a while. Been a rumble.
Panton's Pizza. Yes, I remember when it was Pantone's Pizza, yeah. That's crazy.
That's a lot.
I know.
You've established yourself now.
Yeah. And I actually walked to it, I remember walking to here from a friend's house, so I could, so I might have some input on the trail system. That's for the best. But, so these, this is the work that we're completing right now, and the next steps is looking at each of these individually, each of the six areas at a, more zoomed in scale, and doing a strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, threats analysis. We will be doing this during the charrettes and the community engagement meetings, and we're going to ask the public to identify these three or four things, and then we're going to rank them, you know, what is the, what is the theme of the, what is the thing that was most identified? Maybe it's adjacency. So that's a, I'm sorry, I guess that would be maybe, strength might be visibility or something. And then working on plan, vision, and goals, collect our input, do the charrette, we're doing the charrette in conjunction with the 407 corridor trail. So those two will be done, I believe, that's a two-day process, Ron, the charrette?
Yes.
And then prepare the concept scenarios in draft form, and then we share those. So that's where we are with the opportunity areas.
Randy, before you leave that one, I do want to mention Randy did say that there are some applications that have been received on some of those opportunity areas, some of those zonings in place, so they can apply for a permit and move forward, some may need a site plan, some others may need to zone and change, but we're making sure that we get that information too, mechanics, and it may require us to have some other meetings, because of course you know as developers, time is money, and we had hoped that a lot of these things, we could wait till we get to the end of the plan, have a clear vision. Doesn't always work that way, but we may have to have some discussions about some of those opportunity areas before the plan is actually finished.
We'll be happy to help with those discussions, if that's needed. The last one, I think, is the thoroughfare one, and we have partnered with, DeChaiseau Group is helping prepare the thoroughfare plan update, and they are really in the same position as many of us, almost prepared for their GIS and plan and policy review and coordinating with TechDOT. And like Ron mentioned, looking at intersections specifically, and has, you know, multimodal, you know, vehicle and bicycle, you know, at the intersection, how do we keep those separated and protected? And then opportunities and constraints analysis. The vision and goals from, for the thoroughfare plan should, you know, hopefully will be focused on, the goal is to identify the on-site available options that Ron mentioned, is there enough lane width or pavement width to accommodate a bike lane exclusive of the vehicle traveling? And the impact of the future widening of 2499? And then reviewing how the preferred scenario, the concept scenarios from the opportunity area plan and the 407 plan, how they impact the 407 corridor, the street itself. And then TechDOT guidelines for design impacts in the right-of-way. So those, the goals should, you know, are going to be focused on those areas now, and then once we do the community input, what comes out of that related to the thoroughfare plans. The recommendations will be based on, you know, what, you know, analysis of the existing street network, multimodal, the design guidelines, and new street intersections that we talked about. And again, implementation strategies, funding resources to do any of these updates, and then the design guidelines to create our brand along this TechDOT roadway, you know, that ties into the 407 corridor, I'm sorry, the Village Connection corridor brand as well. Okay, go to the next one. And then Ashton, I think you're up.
So the folks in North Carolina, I can't hear them breathing, so.
It's calling.
Oh.
Stand over here.
The folks in North Carolina can't hear through the system we have set up, so we're going to set up a phone, can we just take a short little break?
Sure.
To do that?
I'm pleased. So we're going to break for five minutes.
Our DFW office, we're really very, I'm going to, I'm not supposed to use the word experts, but we're very, have a lot of experience in large private development. We did the Riverwalk, and it's kind of like a miniature city, restaurants, living, and office and businesses. And then we're working on a project out west that is about 20 times bigger than Riverwalk. And it's, I think, about 16% smaller than the entire city of Highland Village. So there, again, master planning and looking at things holistically, how we're doing with Highland Village and the comp plan. And we're working on a couple more that are even larger than the city of Highland Village. So we're bringing all of that together and looking at what's existing, but what can Highland Village be? So I just wanted to bring you up to date a little bit on who we want, because from whenever the RFQ went out and our supplemental for that, there was a lot of information, but that was several months ago. Okay, Ashton, go.
Okay. The last section to go over tonight, before we get into asset mapping, is the community engagement portion. So to start off in our discussion on community engagement is to go over what strategy we're going to be taking with whatever we engage the community. So really, what it comes down to is the different types of groups that we're going to be engaging. So you see those three different types of groups. You have small groups, user topic focused groups, and large groups. And we're going to go over a little bit more detail of who is involved and who is a part of each one of these groups as we've evaluated it. But the main point and the common theme with each one of these different groups is we want to have, and our goal is to always have, a values-based community conversation. So we want to build on new partnerships that are going to arise with these three different groups. We want to make sure with all of these groups that we bring everybody to the table, and we want to build on current strengths with all of these different groups. So this is a schedule that we've put together for the different community engagement meetings. So as Ron spoke to, whenever he was introducing the project tonight, our first, our next thing that we have coming up is the public input phase one. And we're going to go over the goals of that first one as the next one coming up. But we're going to be having engagements and meetings with all of the different categories you see here on the left. So we're, with each one of those different plan specifics, studies that we're going to be doing. So we'll have a PR advisory board meeting coming up as well. Those interviews are going to be scheduled, partner meetings, so meetings with like TechDOT, environmental groups, FEMA, things like that. Another big component with the community engagement that's really important is the scientific survey. We're also going to go into more detail about that, but we'll be sending out a scientific survey that has a 95% accuracy rate with the questions that we ask the residents of Highland Village. And then, of course, we're doing, we have an engagement with councils, what we're doing tonight. And then we're in constant discussion with the leadership team, as well as the interdepartmental staff meetings that we're having. So of those three group, different types of groups that I mentioned earlier, the, to go into more specifics about those groups, so large group engagements that we'll be having, those will be taking place in things like special events, like the Hot Air Balloon Festival, Fourth of July type festivals, community meetings, so city council meetings, planning zoning commission meetings, pop-up meetings, intercept surveys. And then for small groups, I will be engaging with advisory boards, inner jurisdictions, so the city of Lewisville and city of Flower Mound, or town of Flower Mound, sorry, and elected officials. So we'll be, I'm sure we'll be meeting with a lot of you in this room, as well as the different city departments and our partners involved with this process. And then, as we go down to the last line, this is where we're going to be having the most detailed conversations, where we can really get into the weeds of all of the different components of the comp plan update. So those will be groups like your focus groups, steering committees, those design surets that Randy was speaking to about the opportunity areas, and then, as well as interviews with current property owners who own vacant land, as well as adjacent property owners around those opportunity areas. Okay, so for the first community engagement, it's February 23rd, 10:00 a.m. to 7:00, so an all-day event located here at City Hall. We're going to have city leadership present. We will have the consulting team as McAdams there. And our desired outcomes is really just to educate the residents as to what we're doing. And we want to understand the types of conditions for each of these different components of the comp plan, as well as gaps. So what, what areas may we not have thought of yet that we can, we can provide recommendations throughout the process? And then our metric for success, we want to have good attendance, we want to receive constructive feedback. So with, with this meeting, there's a couple of different, I guess, formats, if you will, of how this will take place. So there will be a virtual component to it. So there will be cameo recordings of each of the different stations, kind of what, just an overview of each station, just kind of giving them a, you know, view of, from, you know, high up of what each of the different components are of the comp plan. There's going to be an in-person component, of course. So we'll have welcome tables, stations with each of the different components, discussions with the consultants and staff, different graphics and data that we will provide. And then the hybrid, so those, to my understanding, the virtual component with the recordings, those are going to get published on Bang the Table, where residents will be able to make comments on those videos and provide their input, you know, from their computer. And then, last slide to discuss community engagement, we have our scientific survey. So this is a type of survey that we're going to be sending out by mail. It'll be done also through the internet or the phone. There's going to be approximately 2,000 to 3,000 surveys sent out to residents of Highland Village. And our goal is to get about 300 of those surveys back. And with those surveys, it really just pones in on what's important to the residents, what areas of the city would they, you know, like to see improved, you know, what are, what's in their mind of things that they would like to see, you know, take place in their city that they live in. So that'll be something that we get, and then we'll be able to catalog it and get data based off of that, so that we can be as accurate as possible through our recommendations with the comp plan update. And that's all that I've got. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Okay. Doing the surveys, how are you going to make certain or understand the demographics of the respondents? What do you have in the survey? How do you size that? 20% senior citizens, they will probably respond more than others.
We have, we have two levels at the public meetings. Those surveys will be based on whoever shows up and interacts. On Bang the Table, on the city website, again, it will be based on whoever chooses to do that. But the scientific survey, it's going to drill down, because they will be gathering intense information from the 2020 National Census. And knowing where everybody is, our goal is really to look at diversity and equity and inclusion. And so as they send those out, they will be looking at age, age groups, gender groups, racial groups, all within the city. And there was a great question from Lori about us putting that on the website. Well, if we put it on the website, then it becomes who selects to do it. So it will only go out through different media sources, such as mail. And it will be very targeted. Now, we can't make anybody answer that, but it's a, it is quite targeted as far as demographics, income, marital status, like I said, race and gender and, and everything. Because the goal is to get that cross-section to respond. Because in our public meetings, as you kind of alluded to, that's volunteer and not, you know, a, a family where both of them are working, and then they both come home and they are attending to, you know, three kids. The likelihood of them coming to some public meetings, or sometimes even taking the initiative to go on the website and do some of our surveys. So the scientific survey, and this was a learning experience for me, is, is very targeted to increase our diversity and equity across all the various demographics. Thanks, Ashton. The next section we're going to move into is asset mapping. And Ashton and Megan, if y'all can give all the council people a couple of pads in a hand. Asset mapping, to me, the first thing that pops into with asset is financial. You know, I go, okay, well, I have this in my 401K, and, oh yeah, I need to put more money in my Roth. So whenever I was talking with Rachel, who is our Civic Spaces Director on this, she goes, oh, no, no, think of more. And I said, okay, well, my house is an asset. She goes, Ron, you're not thinking creative. What are true assets? And I go, oh, my wife and kids are really more of an asset than my financial stuff to me. And so this asset mapping isn't what are the, you know, what are the bricks and mortar of the city? It's not how much money do we have in our rainy day account, whether it's required by state law or by choice. It's who are we as a city? And I love standing here and going, who are we? Because being a part of the community is very important to me. And the, the staff that I had mentioned have already gone through this, and we're going, oh, well, let's hand that out. No, we don't want it to be what the staff was thinking or what I'm thinking. This is brainstorming with what, with what y'all are thinking. So we didn't give it to you beforehand to do homework and go, you know, labor over some of these questions. It's a lot more spontaneous, if you'll go to the next room. And again, opportunities and constraints. That can be, you know, some actual park facilities, but it can also be philosophical and who we are in identity, opportunities and constraints. And we, this is just a, a beginning of a conversation on who is, who are we, who is, what is Highland Village? Not only internally, but also how are we unique and different from some of the cities that may touch us, Southern Denton County, Olive Denton County, the DFW area? Who are we? Because once we know who we are, then we want to look at the opportunities to let everybody know who we are, and to celebrate who we are, and, and build on that, and building on the strengths and identifying the gaps of who we are. So it's, you know, it's not just physical stuff that's on here on the second slide, but it's really who are our cultural resources? Our organizations that we may have, spaces and facilities, our heritage, not just buildings, but our cultural history. We're working on, we've been working on attempting to work with the city of Weatherford on a downtown mastermind. Well, Parker County and Weatherford, it goes back to the mid-1800s, and their history is very important to us, to, we have an important history. Even before we became incorporated, we were a lakefront community of people, part of the name from Highland Park, of people who, in Dallas, who wanted to get out of the rat race and be out here. That developed and continued to develop. We incorporated, Highland Shores came in, or mobile, I think it was mobile development came in. And so who are we historically, and why did people come to us over the past history? Our natural heritage, that's a huge, huge part of who we are. I haven't looked overall, but I bet there's few cities that have as much of their property line, not property line, city limits line, that bought a water source. I mean, Highland, Lewisville has a little bit, but it's not a big part of, it's not a big percentage. So we have a huge percentage of our property line, so that is a natural heritage. And then festival and events, who, I mean, people around here know it's for the balloon festival. When Rhoda was here and we started the, was it the Red, White &amp; Blues was the first name? Red, White &amp; Blues Festival? That quickly became a part of our identity and has continued on. But there's a lot of other things, who, who we are and our events. Internally, our Christmas tree lighting, that everybody in Highland Village knows about that. And, you know, it's sort of like, I went to A&amp;M, and a saying from A&amp;M is, if you do something once, it instantly becomes a tradition. And if any of y'all went to A&amp;M, there's just books and books of traditions and things you can do and can't do, and who we are. Well, who are we for what we've done in the past? So is that the last slide? Okay. So what, y'all have some sticky pads, and we're going to ask four questions, and I want And I want you to write them out and answer them. And the staff has already done that, so staff, when we get to the talking part, I'm not expecting to hear from any of y'all. Now, Paul is city manager, he can do whatever he wants. But if you have some insight, you can say it. But it's real, this is y'all and your chance to answer these questions. So the first question, what about Highland Village makes your community better?
The mayor. Oh, I'm not supposed to say that out loud?
I'm trapped.
Oh, I thought that was, that was, so look, I already answered it.
Guess you go to the next question then.
What, does that one say me on it?
Mayor.
Oh, okay. And I'm gonna give y'all some time, and then we're gonna not go in line, but we're gonna pop around a little bit and give y'all the opportunity to share some of your ideas and why. And then at the appropriate time, I'm gonna cut you off. I'm not trying to be mean to anybody, but I wanna move along with the process. And as you, as you, well, I think we'll wait to ask, so it's a reminder for your, if you wanna talk about it, but we are gonna pick them up and place them around the room by category.
We are?
Yeah.
We, we will do it.
You want to erase it?
You stay there, we'll do it.
So yours with mayor is going to, we're gonna take a picture of it and it's gonna go down in the history books that you put mayor.
Is that a cultural heritage?
Hey, this is a different howdy.
That's right.
Oh, and there's no limit to the number that you went down. Remember, this is brainstorming, just whatever pops in. And then we'll talk about them some.
Yeah, we ran out of sticky notes.
Oh, yeah. We've got about 20, 30 more sticky note pads. If you don't like your color, you can raise your hand and we'll give you another color.
Look at mine, don't try to cheat.
Charlotte, yours matches your lipstick, so.
Oh.
By question, two of us. Are you looking for the number one thing that pops to the head?
No, it's a, okay.
We can do a lot.
It's a word vomit.
See, I'm concerned, I see, I can see his notepad over there and I'm concerned.
He's filling up seven pages.
My one letter or my one word answers.
Yeah, I've got two words.
No, no, it's, it's word vomit, so if you, if you have a phrase, if you have a word, if you have a paragraph, that might be several ideas, and so you would wanna use several sticky pads.
I'm gonna stick with two words.
Okay. And it's not just number one, there's, there's a ton of things that make us better. Well, I don't want to, I don't want us to walk away thinking we're evaluating ourselves against some of the other communities around here, but just what makes us better overall? Or you compare yourself to some of the other communities. In that case, it would be our mayor and the town manager, city manager. And we're not giving score, but the more you have, it shows how much more creative you are.
Okay.
I don't wanna play. I guess I should write better so you could give the two.
Quit just writing mayor.
You've made your point.
I have six of them.
Have you got in there best real estate agent yet?
No.
Oh.
Oh, no, great.
Realtor.
And because we are on a condensed thing here, if y'all think of some more, y'all can certainly email us, email us those. And I'm hoping to have some more questions at the end, but if not, if y'all wrote some down, please, please feel free to send us that. So that's gonna wrap us up for what makes Highland Village, what about Highland Village makes our community better? Anybody would like to share one or two of theirs? Okay. What was the one in your right hand?
Safe is, safe a city, family oriented.
Okay.
Friendly staff, very helpful, great departments, diversity. Should I go on? Anybody else?
Everybody's hit them.
Relationships.
Schools.
Okay, on, on what, what level?
So many people throughout the community know each other, have known each other for a long time because so many people have been here forever, whether they grew up here or moved here when they were, you know, young and starting their families and have stayed, or people like me that left and came back. Those are relationships.
And a lot of it might be because of the size of our city. You know, if, and I'm not making any judgment calls, but if you go to a 5,000-member church, you're not, it's gonna be a little bit harder to build relationships than if you're in a 250-person church. And I think that's the same with our community. We get to know each other a little bit, okay? Relationships, that's good. What were yours again, Charlotte, other than your first two?
Uh, mayor? Safe a city, friendly staff, very helpful, family oriented, diversity, awesome Realtor.
Okay.
Happy weekend.
So staff does have, staff and council has a whole lot to, about defining a city. We've worked in tons of cities around Southern Denton County. And I'm not just saying this because I live here, but after 22 years of working with all these, you have a close second, but Highland Village is absolutely, from our point of view as a developer or as designers, and it's because of the staff over the years, I don't know, it just not have a revolving door. And so people are staying here because it's a great place. And the, the council, we've had three controversial things over the last 20 years that I can think of, but council has always handled it, what's best for the whole city. So I love that one. Go ahead, Lauren. I'm gonna quit preaching.
Why, just our citizens? I mean, that's overarching, but I mean, if you look at the blend of the people that we have, the age, families, older families, younger families, mirror what Dan was saying, second generation coming back. I mean, there's three generations of my family living.
She doesn't share a village right now.
By choice.
Yeah, by choice.
Right.
So I mean, our citizens make the number one, then the other things what brings them in. There's an invite, inviting environment that brings them in and they stay.
Right.
Come back.
That's great, John. Anyone else?
The schools.
Absolutely. That, I didn't know about, anything about Highland Village when I moved here, but I did research the schools. And I'm going, okay, that looks like a good place. And I could've moved into six cities within LISD, but fortuitously, I moved into Highland Village.
How about the mayor? Somebody else could throw that out.
I also put that it's, it's a community about kids. You know, it's always, this community has always been about the, the kids here, providing them places to play or play sports. You know, those kind of festivals, the festivals have always been geared towards the kids.
And somebody had family on their list, so, I mean, that's, that's a part of it. And now multi-generational families that, that you mentioned. And I will say, during Phil's tenure and previous people to Phil, the program of our parks department is just amazing.
You know, I like to tell everybody, we're small, but we have it all. And we're not, it's not about quantity, it's about quality. And we have power.
Put that on a piece of paper so when I take pictures of that, I'll remember. We may be small, but we have it all. Oh, my gosh.
Okay, I'll put that on this paper. The mayor. Oh, wait, no.
I'll throw out another one, which kudos to the man behind here, is our financial stability. I mean, a triple A bond rating allows us to do things that other cities can't. Okay, and there's not a fear of, you know, what's gonna happen tomorrow. With planning like this, then we're gonna look forward to how do we keep it that way? So I mean, that's, that's monster.
Well, and look how long Ken's been here and how long we've had that great standing. So that says a lot about, well, Ken, that staff and the whole mentality. And I don't know if y'all read the latest, what's it that goes at? I mean, our tax rate is a little bit higher than some of the other cities around, but we get so much bang out of our, out of our tax dollars because it's so well-managed. What are we known for internally and externally?
The mayor.
Yes, John, yes!
Best in Denton County.
Man, you're fast, I didn't see you slip him any money.
Checks in the mail, John.
Well, you'd already stressed on these earlier, is the lake, of course, the balloon festival, which we're known all over the United States for it, and the Christmas tree lighting. It's, it's a lot of the events that we're known for.
Oh, if you've already written some other ones, we wanna get everybody's first ones so they don't get mixed up. Do we get everybody's?
These are my seconds.
Oh, okay.
Well, I don't know.
The small but heavy laws for me.
It was what?
Is that for number one?
It was number one, okay, sorry. Underwood. There you go.
And we'll try to wrap this up a little bit early, and we are gonna take pictures of these and catalog them and we'll send them to y'all. But you might wanna, on your way out, just look at this and see. Did, what time, council meeting is officially in the chamber at 7:15?
It's seven.
At seven, okay. So we'll wrap up before seven.
So what's cool about our events though, Ron, is that we partner with community, like the women's club, so the tree lighting in Highland Village, and then the balloon festival with the Lions Club, that Highland Village partners. So I think that's probably what we're known for, is just the partnership and collaboration that we, that we extend with different organizations and groups.
Well, and Lori's work with HVBA, you know, is real instrumental in all of that. And we're not somebody who goes, oh, it's all about us. We partner with some of our community cities. That, oh, that treasure hunt or whatever.
Amazing race.
That we won.
Twice.
Twice. And the mayor.
By the way, the, what was it called? Wine with the Grinch?
Wine Down.
Wine Down with the Grinch. That was a great first-time event and looking forward to that next year.
Another one that I hear, and I don't hear it so much in our, I even hear it some in our city, but I hear it when I talk to people in our neighboring cities, is the fact that we don't have the drama in our, in our politics that some of our neighbors have. It's fairly relaxed, calm environment.
I'll keep my comments to myself. Well, we have any more that you wanna share on this one? Any more ideas? Okay, let's collect those and let's go to the next one. This one is a little, what thought provoked it, not so much looking back, but looking forward a bit. What would strengthen Highland Village's positive impact on the community? And again, I think this is primarily internally, but also externally.
How do you separate Highland Village and community in that question? Community, Louisville, Flower Mound?
Well, primarily how, how, what would strengthen Highland Village's positive impact on our own citizens?
Highland Village being our government? I mean, that's, I'm trying to separate those two.
I, I guess Highland Village would almost be certainly the leadership and council and all of that, but it's really more. As a, as a whole community, how can we improve in how we serve ourselves almost?
I think it can be all those things. Like if you're wanting to talk about leadership, how could we improve the positive, how could we create more of a positive impact in leadership? If it's a, a physical asset like parks, how could we improve that even more? I think we, we want it to be broad so that, you know, wherever your mind's taking you and what you're thinking, just jot it down. Because it could be all of those, it, it doesn't have to be narrow, just on leadership or council or staff or budget or any, it could be all of it.
Go back about four slides to the, there was a green square here and five satellite squares, yeah. I don't know, I'm, that, that whole natural heritage thing is, has always been a important part of mine. And so, you know, how can we let our citizens, and because we make money off of people coming to two of our parks, how can we capitalize on certainly those two parks, but also all of our individual parks? The little one a block and a half away from Highland Village Elementary School? I mean, I've been there with my kids when they were five, but I think a lot of people don't even know that little pocket park is there. And, you know, is that identity or what is that? How can we, for natural heritage or the parks thing, how can we make sure that we are using our assets as much as we can? And Phil will probably agree, the more we use our assets, then that also increases the use and maintenance and all of that.
Do you wanna jump back to the question so maybe it'll spark some more?
Okay. And with that, does, what kind of brainstorming it is do y'all have that you'd like to share? John?
I'll just, I'll throw one out because we talked about a family city. I'll just, I'll throw one out, because we talked about a family city. Make sure we keep our schools full. Keep them full, we've got three elementary and a middle. Families move here, but as we age, as values go up, it's harder for people to move here. If we lose their schools, we lose big identity. And there are strategies to fill the schools, okay? But as a city, I mean, you know, Mayor and I have gone and talked to principals, you know, become a STEM campus, that brings more people in, so.
Right.
You know, just put that one up.
I said improve our gateways. Out of the, what, four or five gateways we have?
Here we are.
There's really only a couple of them that are attractive, you know?
More of them standing in the corridor.
Yeah.
Yeah.
A lot of people, they, they just drive by, and they, and you have to get them into the city for them to see really how beautiful the city is.
But if you think of some of our opportunity airplanes that Randy went over, you know, we would want to, like on that, as we move ahead, and as y'all think about it, I mean, the higher density some of those areas could be is obviously going to give more opportunities for maybe some younger families and people to move in versus, oh, we only want five acre estates on any empty land. Any more? I know there's more, 'cause I see them, any more that you wanna share?
Economic development. We have more sales tax revenue, maybe slow the growth of our property tax.
I think you hit the key point, Dan, on what I garnered from this whole, one of the aspects of this whole project. We're, we have very little left, how can we manage what we have for the future? And future tax base is a huge aspect. Okay, we're gonna collect those, and we'll move to the, the fourth one. So the other one is kinda where we want to go. And this one is, what are some things that might be shackling us or hindering us a little bit? What are some areas of improvement? And if anybody puts mayor, they're gonna get in trouble.
New mayor. Oops. Oh, I think I'll put that.
I'll put a little CW after that. So each door is the fourth. Okay, what are some things that, you know, over the years, or recently, or as you look to the future, might be areas of improvement or hindrances?
Complacency. We're all built out, so we don't have to do anything else.
Okay, thanks for explaining the complacency. And then we can close up shop.
Austin.
Austin.
Okay. Don't, don't pitch a sermon, but just give a couple of examples.
No, it's laws that are passed in Austin that limit our ability to do what we need to do for our community.
Like the tax rate?
Tax rate, the tax limits.
Limits.
Limitations on land use, subdivision processes, things like that, that are impacting the development standards.
I'll just tag, I'll just tag on the job.
Go ahead and do your own with that one.
Number two was LISD is a threat, Louisville Independent School District. Because Robin Hood, they're sending almost fifty million dollars back to Austin. And it impacts our schools. So those, those are threats.
Property taxes.
Money.
The continues, property taxes continue to go up, which means more and more people are priced out of communities like this.
Future?
Our village was built on the middle class, you know, the middle class, upper middle class family.
Right.
Future R and M and aging infrastructure.
You, you just got Phil's attention with that one.
Yeah, Scott's too.
And Scott.
And Scott, yeah. Oh, by the way, Scott, thanks for paving my road today.
I did that on purpose.
I went to work and it's dirt, with tar, and I come home and it's all smooth, it's wonderful.
That's why you couldn't get here, that's why we like it here. You wouldn't drive on it.
I went up and down five times.
She's so fun.
Any more?
I have one.
Sure.
Just one. I already, well.
One that you wanna share?
Yeah, I haven't already yet, but just potential loss of some of our longer term employees at the city. And the knowledge that they take out the door with them when they leave.
Right.
So turnover, excessive turnover, and then what that does with, you know, the council's ability to, to do our jobs, right? So I see that as a potential, you know, big threat for, especially the next five years or so.
Right.
For all the other reasons mentioned.
Well, Michael was certainly here a long time and kinda built a legacy. For anybody that was on his election committee, thank you for that. He just has brought a fresh and new, but also right in line with where we've been for the last twelve years, or however long Michael was here. And that continuity, maybe Paul hasn't done it yet, you know, maybe he has, okay, I have these twenty things I'm gonna change, but I'm not gonna do it for a year. I don't think that's who Paul is, but he does have fresh ideas, but not looking at, oh, it's broke, I gotta fix it. Any more? Well, we're gonna collect those, thank y'all for giving us your time to do this. We're certainly gonna be looking at these. And it will actually help frame, at our first public meeting, there's gonna be five stations. And each station is going to have a survey for people to turn out, work on. And the first one is gonna be, let the citizens do some asset mapping. So we can, instead of just opening it wide, we can put maybe twenty-five things on there and let people find them or whatever. So y'all's help on this is great. And I wanna leave y'all plenty of time for your break, but this, we do have, I'm gonna say four minutes, maybe five, if anybody has any questions on some of the stuff that we talked about, or things that, for this whole process, maybe has nothing to do with this meeting, but you go, you know, I hope they thought about this, or would think about this, because we're here at your, at your will and your direction. Yes, John?
Just a piece of property at Highland Forest Boulevard at twenty-four ninety-nine southeast corner. I didn't see that anywhere up there. I don't know who owns that. I think it's probably an acre and a half, maybe two acres.
Oh, we talked about that.
It's ugly, yeah.
It's a hall.
His zone is commercial.
It's only commercial. Yeah, I mean, I figured it had been left for, you know, a racetrack. Let me get some population up on ours. But, I mean, and I think that means what, what's on your list is all it's based.
Okay, I'll make note of that.
Thanks.
Where was that? Southeast corner of twenty-four ninety-nine and Highland Forest Boulevard.
That piece that's up on the hill.
It's down.
It's down.
It's in a hole.
Oh.
Southeast corner.
It's on the hard corner, yeah.
Scott, didn't you mention somebody look at that, it's been years ago, to do something?
Some kind of auto place. But it's not a tent.
What's viable there?
And one that we didn't know about, and Randy alluded to it, there's a little bitty track just north of.
Torches.
Torches, that is on the master plan, and I believe it's entitled as a drive-through. In that parking lot.
So is that like a raised pad, was it pad-sized, just a grass pad or something small? Maybe like fifteen, eighteen hundred square feet?
Be the community pool for the park.
It's going on top of the eighth story.
Well, we're not gonna, we're not gonna go down that.
Anyone else have any questions for us?
No, it's a good application.
Hope they do this.
If not today, we would certainly welcome emails or phone calls or anything. If there's something you think about after you leave here, or any of the questions like Ron mentioned. Drink some coffee, think about it in the morning on Saturday or something, oh, I need to send that over to McAdams. We, we, the whole, throughout this whole process, just keep sending us stuff, we welcome that.
And Lori, I'm, I'm gonna get with you for staff and council, not all banging the table, to make sure everybody has, like Randy's in mind, main phone number, email. And I'm not gonna open that up to banging the table, but I will certainly open it to staff and council.
Awesome.
I just volunteered to.
That's fine, that's great, yeah, I like that. I think it makes the plan better, the more people we get, so.
Well, we appreciate all of this. We were, we were excited to be able to see this, and, and kinda see where you've been, and, and get a, an idea of where we're going, and, and the process that we're gonna go through. So, you know, I'm, I'm really excited about, about all of this, so. And I love the fact that it's a local, so it's as important to you as it is to us and to our residents. So, thank y'all.
Well, and like I said, I mean, I can just name place after place in Highland Village that we've been working. You know, it used to be IASIS, and now it's, you know, new to name this. But even going back before that, I saw the picture of Selmair. And, I mean, that used to be a bank, and then it was the town hall for, a city hall for a while. You know, and just going back, and four oh seven was, of course, Tulane Bar Ditch Road, so.
Traffic was awful.
Yeah.
Anybody else have anything? No?
Okay.
Okay.
Thank y'all so much.
Do we have any clarifications on the agenda? Anybody? Are you in a hurry, John? Is anybody? All right, well then, adjourned at fifty-two.
Good evening and welcome to the Highland Village City Council meeting. Today is January 25th, 2022, and it is 7:05 PM. This meeting is called to order and let the record show that all council members are present with the exception of Councilman Heslop. He is, I think, at home watching us. So, we are going to get started with a prayer led by Councilman Jaworski, and then he will also lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please join me in prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you as we are continuing to deal with the scourge that is COVID-19, and just ask that you continue to provide people with the strength and the perseverance to navigate these, these trying times and, and decision makers that are having to make tough decisions about schools and other facilities and whether to keep them open or not, and give them the, the strength and wisdom to make smart decisions that are, to take all points of view into account. We ask that you continue to bless those of us who are trying to govern our city and, and make decisions that are in the best interest of our residents. Ask that you continue to provide an envelope of protection around our firefighters and police officers as well as our troops wearing the nation's uniform, in particular as some are getting ready to deploy overseas to defend interest in the Ukraine. And we just ask that you continue to bless our country and our state and all these things we, we say in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. District comments? Angie, are there any district comments?
No.
Does anybody in the crowd want to fill out a district comment card? Okay, we're going to move on then. We're going to move to mayor and council reports on items of community interest. Council, does anybody have anything?
I have one thing, Mayor.
Okay, absolutely.
I'd like to congratulate Councilman Heslop, serving on the board of the Louisville Hospital, and also to you, Mayor, for serving on the board of the Louisville Chamber of Commerce. Congratulations.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else?
So I, oh, go ahead.
Does anybody have anything?
So I have, just, I'm going to, I'm going to throw this out there. I have been, there's a challenge that's, a mayor's challenge is going to be coming up for the Children's Advocacy Center. I don't have all the information in front of me, but it's a repelling challenge. And I don't mean like repel, get away from me. I mean like down the side of a building.
Repelling.
Yeah. I'm thinking really hard about not participating, but, but our, our mayors in the cities are challenging me to do that. So what I'm asking from y'all is prayer. Because if, if I so choose to do that, like if you took my blood pressure right now, it would be sky high just talking about it.
Can you have a stand-in?
I don't know. If I get COVID.
We have a Marine.
I know, and he would be my choice.
I'll set the date after June 11th.
So I have to register for that and then I have to, hey, and then I have to, oh, and we have to raise $1,250. If you don't raise $1,250, you cannot repel. So.
Ah, darn.
Community, please don't give. All right. So just keep that in mind. I'll give you more information about that as it comes up. All right. Nothing else? Then we're going to move on to city manager and staff reports. I think we have a COVID update.
Mayor and council, I thought we gave you an update with the Omicron wave that we're dealing with now. Who thought we'd be here 22 months into this and still doing this? I don't think any of us did. So looking at the numbers, I, I put up the similar slide we've shown before, but you see the last time we did a presentation, August 8th, and you can see the difference as of today. The numbers have gone up very quickly, specifically the last month. So I wanted to focus on Denton County just to give you an idea of the impacts of Omicron. If you look at the 21 months preceding Omicron, we had 114,557 cases in the month since we've had the deal with Omicron. We've gone up to 155,297. So we had an increase of almost 41,000 cases in a month, which is basically equates to about 36% increase in a month versus the previous 20 months. So that's the Omicron, how fast it spreads, you know, vaccinated, not vaccinated, it doesn't really pick, it just, everybody gets, can get, can get it. So if you look at the recoveries, I mean, the recoveries have, have gone up quite a bit less with only 3,394 in that same period of time. The active cases, of course, were at the highest we've ever been at 43,000. We've never, this is 23,000 more than we've ever been before. However, when you look at the fatalities that are caused by COVID, we've had an increase of 14, which is about 1.8% increase. So when you look at overall in the state of Texas, these are two graphs I pulled off today from the state of Texas dashboard. The first one is the new confirmed cases. So you can see the initial jump there, the alpha, the delta, and then you see the Omicron. It's pretty obvious how they kind of come across the page there on the graph. Omicron, of course, I mean, everybody's experiencing it. It's, it's very contagious. The symptoms are less than what the previous variants have been. When you look at the fatalities though, due to, you can see the same peaks and valleys here with the initial, the alpha and the delta, but you don't see a peak for Omicron. So Omicron is not having the same impact. If you, it's not keeping pace as the other ones had for fatalities. And that doesn't, I don't want to minimize what Omicron is. There is still people that can be susceptible to having more severe symptoms. When we look at the hospitalizations, our hospitalizations are pretty much at the max that they've ever been. However, we're not seeing a huge increase. Like you see, if, if you looked at the numbers going up the same as the number of new cases, they're not doing that. They're going up much slower and tapering off. The average hospital stays approximately two days less than the previous variants with Omicron. So the hospitals are able to cycle people through and there's fewer people in the ICU. If you look at the daily usage on the ICU beds, we have 48% as of today. The highest was 70%. So we're not even close to the highest ICU bed usage. However, we still have people in the hospital, and it's just due to the sheer numbers of people getting COVID. I mean, it's 10% of 600 a day versus 5% of 4,000 a day. There's still more people that are getting it, still more people that are going to the hospital. So moving forward, obviously, you all know that Louisville School District is closing down their camp, all of their campuses for Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. They've seen a 500% increase in their cases for their middle school and high school age kids, as well as they're dealing with severe staffing shortages. Now, you're going to see the same thing with other local Denton County school districts. I know Denton is closing certain campuses. Lake Dallas is considering closing down as well. And this is going to, going to be a thing we're going to be dealing with over the next, you know, three weeks to a month. Everybody is saying right now that, I mean, if you look at the Northeast where Omicron first came in, they're starting to see a plateau and a little bit of a decline in the numbers. Hope we're about two weeks behind them. So we're hopefully, you know, being optimistic mid-February, maybe end of February, we'll start to be in the same position where we're starting to see a decline and kind of a green normalization, if you will, of where we're at. Moving, we're going to continue to assess the needs for vaccinations and boosters. We're holding a booster clinic for staff tomorrow. We still have some vaccine available for staff and family members just in case they need them because our goal is to keep people working. Obviously, we're navigating COVID with our, with HR in partnership with HR. You know, the fire department's had 50% of our people have been off, have gotten COVID in the last month. So we're just trying to manage, you know, our, you know, our workflow and make, make sure our level of service isn't dropping. I know we're not the only department. There's probably been, in the, talking to Jan, about 21% of this total city staff has gotten COVID, which is much higher than it's ever been before. Thankfully, with the renewed guidelines the CDC did with the five days off, it's kind of changed the impact. It offered full two weeks, which allows them to come back to work faster with the mask things and everything. So we're able to turn people around, get people back to work to maintain those service delivery that we, that everybody expects. And moving forward, just to be continually socially responsible, you know, wear masks when it's appropriate, continue to do good hand washing, sanitization practices, and you, you know, where, you know, continue to socially distance when you can, if it's necessary. You know, it's, it's, there's no mandates out there for, for us. If there's a question about the, the dance, I'll go ahead and address that now. I think it's best with talking to Phil, with the, the 205 people that were signed up to go to the dance and all those people coming from the same schools that the school district shut down for a couple of days and it's right in the middle of the closure. You know, the number one thing we want to focus in is first of all, our kids' health, and second of all, our kids' education. And we don't want to put that at risk for a dance, even though it's very hard. And I know a lot of people are going to be upset that, that we've canceled that this year. And it was a tough decision to make. We'd worked very hard to make sure we were going to keep this open, but the school district made their decision and we have to follow suit. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that y'all might have.
So.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mike. I'm sorry.
So the recovery rate, if you can go back that slide real quick, or the slide that has all the stats.
This one, this, this one does the city, the county, this one's just the county?
It doesn't matter. So the, the question I have is, this particular variant, it tends to run its course in five days as opposed to 10. Has that changed in the statistics or are we still holding somebody who passed test positive for 10 days even though the recovery is actually five or four?
In the city here, HR's been very proactive with updating our policies to make sure that we're doing the five days and they come back with a mask for five days.
No, no, that's great. I, I'm just saying in the numbers, are they reflecting people? Is, is a third of those numbers people who've already recovered, yet they're still showing up as a number because it's a 10-day recovery from the old variants, yet we're dealing with one that's a five day?
Well, I think what you're seeing is a lag in the reporting because Denton County is obviously overwhelmed and not just your numbers, and they used to call everybody to find out if you recovered and everything. You also have to remember that all these home tests that we're having, there's not a way to really report those to the county. So we don't even know if the current active cases are truly accurate.
Correct.
The county's put on their website a way that you can self-report if you'd like. But I think that the recoveries are lower basically because the county is, they're very diligent and the fatalities, again, these, these 14 deaths that we've experienced in Denton County, which is tragic. The county is very diligent about making sure they're, they are COVID-related deaths. They're not a, a, somebody has COVID and dies from another cause. So there's always a lag. So the two deaths that we had today, they may be from the beginning of December when it was still Delta. We, we don't know that for sure. But as far as the recoveries go, to, to count all the recoveries with the amount, the massive amounts of cases that they're dealing with, there's, there's going to be a delay. And like mid, mid-February, you'll all of a sudden see what we saw before, where you'll have, you know, 500 new cases, but you have 2,000, 3,000 recoveries a day. It'll, it'll flip over. So instead of the 369 recoveries we had over the weekend, I believe, and 4,400 new cases, you'll have 4,400 recoveries and 339 new cases. It's just there's a delay in the reporting trying to get that there. Does that answer your question, Mike?
And I, I think that was kind of my, the same question that I had. When did it change? And you're not having to get a negative test to come back to work. You just have to go five days from the onset of your symptoms to come back to work, and then you have to wear a mask. to come back to work, and then you have to wear a mask for five days.
There's five, there's a couple of different interpretations of the CDC guidelines. It's either five days from the day you test positive, five days from the day your first day of symptoms, and then five days wearing a mask. If you're exposed, they recommend getting a test at five days, just to make sure you're negative. Of course, tests can be hard to find. It's another thing we're trying, we have tests coming in, so we're gonna be able to provide that as well to staff, to make sure we try to facilitate them. Because our goal is to keep everybody working as much as we can, and obviously, maintain our service delivery to the community, so.
Yeah, and keep them safe. I was at the chamber luncheon today. Barbara and I were there. And the CEO of Medical City Louisville was there. And she gave some statistics that I thought were very interesting. And I, it kind of put everything into perspective. So I wrote these down. Since March of 2020, when COVID started, okay? Through now, 2022, to the, at this point, they had tested at Medical City Louisville, 21,172 people. Of that, 2,772 were positive. 1,033 were hospitalized of that. And then 903 went home, and they had 130 deaths at Medical City Louisville. So that was pretty eye-opening to me, that they tested that many people. And unfortunately, there were, you know, 130 deaths. But, and, and she made a point of saying, the nurses and the doctors are exhausted. They're tired. But they're still doing their job. They're still there and taking care of everybody that comes in. So, you know, hats off to, to them. Hats off to our, the medical profession for everything that they've had to go, to go through. And, and you know, to the fire department, please, the people that have, are on the front line having to, to address this. So I just wanted to share that, because I thought that was.
It's probably weighed hardest on the hospital. Charlene, our administrative coordinator's daughters, an ICU nurse at Medical City Denton. And, you know, they see, and they've been through the whole process, where they see where they can't let family members see other family members, and where they see people dying alone. And there's nothing that they can really do to bring families together and give them that comfort. It's weighed really hard. And then, you know, they're saying, you know, we're talking to the North Central Texas Trauma Regional Advisory Committee in the hospitals. They're saying it's gonna take a decade for them to figure out the staffing, because there's so many people leaving, the medical, doctors too, leaving the medical field completely and getting away from hospital-based medicine. It's gonna take a decade before we are able to recover post-COVID. You know, I think we just need to keep praying that Omicron is what takes COVID from a pandemic back to an endemic, so that we can kind of get on and move forward. And just hopefully, this is, you know, this is, it feels bad because of the numbers, but their residual hospitalizations and then the fatalities aren't keeping track. So that's, it's a positive sign.
Couple of questions, couple of questions. So you mentioned the, the people that are able to do home testing, and whether or not those people are being able to report. Did they provide any data on what that portal for self-reporting, how much traffic they're getting?
It, it actually just opened, I think it was last Wednesday, we had that meeting. It's brand new. So they didn't have any data. They, they, we did, they didn't have a meeting on Monday like they normally do. So I have, unfortunately, don't have that information.
And then, so the data that is coming in, I'm assuming a lot of that's coming from doctors' offices around the county?
Doctors' offices, the corner ERs, medical clinics, the stand-up little testing centers that are out there.
Okay. I'm just curious what the long-term impact on the real numbers is gonna be. The last question is, before Omicron, the sweet spot for testing was three to five days after symptoms. Omicron's much quicker. So has, has anybody looked at that guidance to adjust it of what, when you should look to get a test?
They say it's two to three days now. They've just bumped it up a day or so.
Okay.
Where, where, it's, that's kind of the sweet spot for testing. But again, it's, you know, Omicron's, you know, there are some tests that don't, don't even really pick up Omicron. There's a lot of false negatives that are out there too, because it's just a different virus. It's a different, it's the same base virus, but it's got 32 different mutations on the protein spikes, basically. That's why people that are vaccinated can get it. Now, vaccine is what it's supposed to do, maintain, your symptoms are much less than the people that are unvaccinated. And it's predominantly the people that are really sick in the hospitals. Unfortunately, they have underlying medical conditions, and they're not vaccinated. So.
Anybody else? All right. Thanks, chief.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Now, we're gonna have the Village Report.
New and now open in Highland Village. Hi, I'm Becky, and this is Dorothy, and we're the owners of Hazel and Honey Boutique. We are so excited to be here at the shops at Highland Village. And we are a women's boutique, offering gifts and accessories. We have a new local spirit wear area, as well as a new line of children's clothing. So we hope that you will stop in and see us soon. Now cut that ribbon.
Hello, everyone. Welcome to Foodie Friday DFW. And in partnership with the Highland Village Business Association, I'm here with Pvez Mouchani, always known as Ali, and his new restaurant, Egg Express Cafe. Welcome to Foodie Friday DFW. Ali, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
This is fun. I, I don't know if you've heard, but breakfast is my favorite meal of the day. You know? And I'm really glad that you're the new owner here at Egg Express Cafe.
Thank you.
So welcome to Highland Village. And is it true that you came here to follow your daughter?
Yes, sir.
That's so cool. What happened? Tell the story.
She got married in July 2021. So she moved with her family, Lowe's family. Then my son moved here in August 2021. Then me and my wife were alone, so we decided to move. I had a business there, a restaurant up there in Atlanta. But just for the kids, we just lined up everything and just moved next month. So in two months, we whole family moved from Atlanta to.
Well, thank you for buying Egg Express Cafe. It's well-loved here in Highland Village. And everyone loves breakfast. And lunch, because you serve breakfast and lunch, right?
Breakfast and lunch, yeah.
Okay, brilliant. So the place looks kind of the same. I heard the food is just as good.
Same as, yeah.
Very good. So tell me, what are we gonna see today for food?
Today, we're gonna make some, it's called Berry Bliss Pancake.
Berry Bliss Pancakes.
Yes, sir. It has pancake topped with all the berries on the top, and the drizzle of the raspberry and glaze.
Now, do you have Eggs Benedict?
Yes, sir. We do have Eggs Benedict. We do have Egg Express Skillet also. Egg Express Skillet has some vegetables, and it has chicken apple sausage in there. Lot of people like that.
What are some of your lunch items we're gonna talk about today?
For the lunch item, we got some burritos. We have sandwiches. We have salads. And especially, we do have a lot of burgers, different kind of burgers, yeah.
So people can come here for breakfast, lunch?
And the lunch, all day long.
Or in between?
All day long, they can get everything they want.
Very good. So tell me, what are your hours?
Hours are starting from 7:00 AM to 2:30 PM. And we, and we open seven days a week.
Okay. Very good. So what have you loved about Highland Village so far?
It's a nice, quiet city. Yeah, because I'm from, basically from Chicago, but then we moved to Atlanta. And I think this is a nice and quiet place.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Very good.
Thank God, come from church every morning, so gives me blessing.
That's awesome.
Thank God.
I'm so glad for that.
Thank you, sir.
Last question, Ali.
Sure.
And by the way, again, thank you. But if you can tell 10,000 people one thing about Egg Express Cafe, look into the camera, what would you say?
I'm pleased to see you guys up here. And you will love my restaurant, my service, my people are very nice. And I really want to see you. I just moved from different state, and I really love this Highland Village place. And, and please come to see me, and I will be waiting for you. Thank you so much.
Wasn't that great? Ali is the real deal. It's a wonderful family-owned restaurant, right here in Highland Village. He's here, living his dream, following his family, and providing us a great opportunity for breakfast and lunch. Come meet Ali. Come try this wonderful place, Egg Express Cafe. And on behalf of the Highland Village Business Association and Foodie Friday DFW, thank you for watching.
Okay. All right. So we're gonna move on to the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are considered for approval by a single motion and vote without discussion. Each council member has the option of removing an item from this agenda, so it may be considered separately, and/or adding any item from the action agenda to be considered as part of the consent agenda items. Council, does anybody want to move anything? Okay. Number 10, consider approval of minutes of the regular city council meeting held on December 14th, 2021. Receive budget report for period ending October 31st, 2021. 12, receive budget report for period ending November 30th, 2021. Council?
Mayor, I approve the, the above report.
Okay. We have a motion, council, and Mr. Feaster?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Council, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign, carry 6-0. Thank you. All right, we are going to move on to action agenda. Consider Resolution 2022-2983, ratifying the emergency declaration by the city manager, authorizing an agreement with Weisinger, Inc., for the Southwood Well Pump repairs. Mr. Kristin?
Thank you, Mayor and council. October 16th of 2021, city staff noticed that the Southwood Well Pump was tripping the well motor on a regular basis. So we started our troubleshooting process. And of course, with COVID labor shortages and, and the difficulties of getting our vendors out, it took us a couple of weeks to determine that it was a well pump failure. So we declared an emergency, had Weisinger come out and pull the pump. And sure enough, when they took it back to their shop and tore it apart for the inspection, we went down and took a look at the 14-stage pump, and it showed a lot of wear, and it was producing brass. So the, it was determined that the well pump was bad. So we got a quote from them. It's, it's within our budgeted amount. And they said that they could have all parts located and assembled and delivered back to the city within four weeks of a, of a PO being issued, which would put us into the February, end of February timeframe to get the well back installed. With that, I'll take any questions you might have.
Are they, are they loaning us a unit in the meantime? Or are we renting a unit in the meantime?
No, you don't rent a pump. We have rented motors in the past. But this is the pump that's, that's 1,800 feet down. And it's not a, it's, it's not a rentable item. It's a, it's a, it's a, it's a manufactured item specific for that hole.
So it's just taken offline?
It's taken offline, so yes. The other wells are, are back in service, as, as well as the upper Trinity.
Okay. Anybody else have a question?
Well, what percentage are we running at with that one offline?
That one takes us down 1.3 million, however, we are in the, in the winter months. So it's about, it's a little over 10%, maybe, maybe close to 15.
Okay.
Makes sense to get it fixed in the winter months. Anybody else?
Remind me again, you said it would be, it would be about, how long before it's done?
They, they're telling us that they can come back to install the end of February.
Okay.
Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Make a motion, we approve Resolution 22, 2022-2983, ratifying emergency declaration.
Okay. Mr. Lombardo?
I'll second that.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, carry 6-0. Okay. Moving right along, we did not meet in closed session. So we're gonna do number 15, discuss correspondence from Denton County Commissioners Court regarding the Denton Central Appraisal District. Council, I believe everybody got this from Angie at your, at your seat. Are you gonna take it, Paul?
Sure will, Mayor. Of course, as you mentioned, you have the information there at your seat to look at. It was what I forwarded to you last Friday via email. The letter essentially from the Denton County Commissioners asked the appraisal districts to do an investigation into their operations. There have been several missteps over the past several years, and they are asking for some clarification on that, and to investigate those issues. Some of the other cities are considering writing a similar letter. So I wanted to make sure that you all have the opportunity to look at this. And I have drafted a letter, if, if you desire to send a, a similar letter, or we could certainly make some additions to that if needed. And to my knowledge at this point, the appraisal district has not responded to the county with regard to the letter they sent.
So I know in the, in the letter from, from Judge Ead's office, it says something at the end about the Board of Directors conducting an investigation. Has that been decided? And have they, and if so, have they started?
It, it has not. At this point, they haven't said anything. I believe I sent you all the email. The, the appraisal district is having their regular meeting on Thursday. They're gonna do a presentation about some things that they have been doing. I'm assuming that that may address some of these issues, but that's as far as it's gone at this point.
I'm not satisfied with that. And I think our letter, if, if I were writing it, I would have stated that I'm not satisfied with an internal investigation. I'd like to see an outside body do it. All due respect to the Board of Directors. I just, I think this is something that needs to be done by somebody who does not have any sort of interest in it.
Okay. Council, does anybody else have any?
Just a question. So you're saying the board has not responded?
That's correct. There's been no, no official response to.
Are we asking the board to investigate their own staff?
Right.
That's, yeah, that's not, not the way you really get it done, so.
Is there a new, some new people being put on the board just recently? Did I read that?
There will be based on the elections. There will be, I believe, two new members.
And Anne Pomacaw was one of those.
That's correct.
Alex Buck.
And Alex Buck.
That's correct.
Okay.
But I, I think I'm in agreement with Dan and John as well. I mean, I, I think it should probably be an outside entity that looks into it. And I'm sure there's people out there that, that do that. So I think.
This is, you know, I've read all the, the court, I've read the news articles and stuff.[1650.88] The accusations are very, very serious. I think in some cases, they're potentially criminal accusations that are being looked at. Um, I, I think this is way too big for an internal investigation. And I think, you know, they have absolutely, just from the, the things I've, I've seen and heard, zero credibility. You know, and they came here. I, I don't, I don't think a whole lot of us were very satisfied with the goods they were selling when they were in front of us.
No.
Another question. Do we have any specific impact on our city? From actions the board has taken or not taken, other than, it didn't show any to us.
No. In fact, in, in 2020, of course, we had the issue with tax rolls not being on time. Uh, last year, they were, Ken, I think a couple of days early. Uh, some of the issues, we have not seen a direct impact. Um, however, it's hard to tell based on some of the comments, what happened to individuals. It's hard for us to identify. Are there any Highland Village residents that fell into that same category?
I think there was at least one that, at least posted online that they had been impacted, but that's anecdotal, so.
Yeah, yeah.
And has Judge Eads invited cities to file briefs, I.E. our letter alongside of theirs?
Not necessarily invited, but of course, when they did adopt this letter and signed it, they did copy all taxing entities to make everyone aware. I know it's been a big topic of discussion among cities and the county, so I, I, I would, I would assume it would be something that would be appreciated.
I don't disagree with, uh, the outside appraisal. I'm just curious at the mindset of the Commissioners Court in not approaching it in that direction.
And I would agree with Barbara in that question. I mean,
I just got a big question.
They obviously have some logic in their decision to go to the board first to investigate. And I would assume if they're not satisfied with that.
Then they go out?
Then they would go.
Go outside, but.
Right.
I, I'm not gonna cast any, this, well, whatever. As, to me, it makes sense to have them at least issue some sort of feedback as a board on, within their organization. And then you can always escalate it from there, but to escalate it first.
Agree with you. I agree with you on that.
I don't know if that's helping us or just, you know, I don't know. I'll leave it at that.
Maybe we should include something that, along the lines that, um, we, we would like the results of, of the board looking into it or, or along the lines of, of Judge Eads' suggestion. And then from there.
I'm not in favor of sending a letter in support or not supportive of what the judge is doing.
No.
Okay. Uh, let's, let's watch it and see, because I don't, a lot of what they said, I'm concerned that they were not focused in their own letter. Maybe I'm not reading it clearly, but there were a lot of different pieces in that. And, uh, I think it can be a rat's nest for them as they dig into it. So I'd rather sit back and watch it for a little bit.
Well, and that's, that's why I'd rather, if they're gonna be, if there's gonna be an investigation, I'd rather it be somebody from the outside, because there is the potential that there's a lot more going on than even what this letter outlines.
But let's let the judge and our county take that first pass.
I think the cities, uh, other cities would like, they're gonna do a letter and, and I think we're in hopes that, you know, everybody would in Denton County. Just stating their dissatisfaction. I know that this last year, they did get the numbers into us on time. But if anybody's looking at anything online, you're seeing people post about discrepancies that have taken place, whether they're in Highland Village or not, it's, it falls under, um, their authority. So, um, I, I'm not opposed to sending a letter in support of the Commissioners and the judge.
I tend to agree with you, Charlotte. But also keep an open mind.
Right. Well, and that's a good point that you and, and Robert made, that there had to be some thought behind them suggesting this. You know, they don't just.
Well, I would have thought that came up themselves, rather than internal or external, but maybe, again, let them, give them a shot to explain themselves, I guess, before we go and ask them.
But this letter was sent out, well, January the 12th, so today's what, the 25th? Yes.
Six, yeah.
So, um, I mean, I can go either way on.
The lack of credibility is a big deal.
Oh, I agree with that wholeheartedly.
So an internal investigation is not gonna do anything to instill any new credibility.
Well, it's, it's the board investigating the organization and taxing entities appoint the board, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Do I have that right?
Yes.
But these are, these are, these board members, they're, they're taxpayers, they're residents. They're not investigators. Uh, they're not, you know, they.
Well, that's, that would be my next question. Who's gonna pay for the investigation of the Denton County Appraisal District? Is that, they're not gonna hire some outside firm to investigate themselves and pay that bill? So is Commissioners Court?
I don't know the mechanics. I don't know the mechanics of how all that works.
No, I, it's just another factor, that's all. I just, we all gotta pay for that.
Maybe that's something that, that, uh, that Kevin could speak to.
Paying for it one way or another.
Well, I understand, but I mean, it's not in the budget, I'll tell you that.
No, I, I would anticipate that, you know, what, what, um, Robert said is exactly what would happen is, is they would hire, you know, an outside firm, you know, whether it be an attorney or, you know, depending on the nature of what needs to be investigated. And, uh, you know, you talk about, I mean, usually in situations where if you don't have an, you know, an I.A.G. type of, of internal office, um, you know, you're gonna always hire outside to come in and investigate, even though it's maybe called an internal investigation. That's, it's usually gonna be an outside investigator's gonna come in and provide that report and do that work.
What are, I know that there, there are instances in, in government where you have, uh, the need of an outside investigation that is done by the Texas Rangers. What are, what are those kind of instances?
Those are typically gonna be in criminal-type situations, um, where, uh, I know, I know the chief be familiar with those, where you've got, uh, and it's usually tied to law enforcement, uh, internal investigations, where, um, you know, you've got potential criminal criminality involved. A lot of times, it'll be, you know, uh, particularly in, in shooting situations.
Okay.
You'll have your own internal, but there's usually also an external, uh, Rangers-type of, of investigation many times will be called in. Um, I've not known, I've not known any other kind of investigation.
Were they not involved in the Constable's Office investigation a couple of years ago? Where we had a, one of our constables was embezzling.
Sorry to interrupt, but criminal act fraud, embezzlement to be criminal act.
Right.
And in, uh, now, if there was an independent investigator assigned, this is based on my 30-plus years watching different states and governmental levels. Um, if, if there was an independent investigator assigned and they're, they're, they're gonna find rule violations or policy violations along that process, if they would find a criminal allegation, then it would be more than likely or should be turned over to an investigative agency with the authority to investigate and present that case in the proper court.
Gotcha, okay.
If it's court, if it's a state court, Rangers, if it's county, it just, it just depends on whatever that, that procedure or policy starts out as.
Okay.
So, and, and they haven't had a meeting. Their meeting is, what'd you say, Thursday?
Thursday.
So that may be the reason that they haven't responded, um, to Judge Eads while, and to the Commissioners. While their, their letter was dated January the 12th, um, you know, and, and, so maybe we do, we send a letter in support of, and that's all this letter says, is that we're expressing our support of the letter from Denton County Commissioners.
Can we then perhaps add an expectation that, um, I'm trying to think of how, how best to, uh, make the ask, but, um, you know, if the Board of Directors is gonna be heading up the investigation, some sort of expectation on, you know, who, I just, I, there's too many, there's too many ambiguities. You know, it's just, we think you should investigate. Okay, how? I just, I don't know. Um, I think certainly we should express our frustration, but I, I just, I don't support what they're saying.
Well, but the, the judge is bringing up three specific things. You know, one was, uh, the software conversion, okay, which may or may not be a problem, probably was a problem. Uh, suggesting they get an IT task force. I know the answer many IT people would give to that is we don't need a task force help, but it'd be good to know what they did. But I mean, that's one issue. Issue on the egg stuff is kind of pointed. And something about, you know, timeliness of a notification. To me, that's a little bit random, okay, that they've got something in, in their, their head. Again, we don't have any place where we have been impacted as a city. We may. So if anything, I would say, Judge, we, we look forward to what you find out and we support your efforts, but I would stay away from any of the particulars in his letter, because I don't think they have any bearing on us. They may, but we don't know and, and I think it's too early to weigh in on that.
Do you agree with, I mean, because this is pretty broad. Do you agree with the letter that?
Not, no, I would say send it to, uh, Judge Eads and we support your initiative. Let it go with that. Because I don't wanna sign up to what he's asking about, because we don't really know about that.
Well, it's just, they're supporting the, uh, the investigation.
Yeah, our letter doesn't really say any specifics.
I don't, I don't support the investigation.
I don't have an issue with that.
Well, you want an investigation to be done.
Yeah, I do.
We're calling for an investigation of the operations of Denton Appraisal District to determine what steps are being taken to address the issues outlined in the letter. That's, that's very broad.
Yes.
And, uh, and not.
But to John's point, by sending this to Mr. Stafford, are we then implying that we support the internal investigation? Or should we send it to Judge Eads saying, "Yeah, we agree there needs to be an investigation"?
Well, it's.
It says we call for an investigation. It doesn't say we're internal, external.
Well, I would think that we could CC the Commissioners Court as well.
I agree.
Send it to them.
I agree.
Send it to the, the director of, um, the chairman and then Appraisal District Board, Hope McClure, and the county commissioners and the judge.
Certainly.
The issues brought up by the Commissioners Court are a major concern. They are. And then obviously, the appraisal district, there's a vital role for the taxpayers and taxing entities. It's pretty, um, pretty to the point.
Mayor, may I make a motion?
I don't think, uh, we don't have, this is just discussion.
We don't need a motion, discussion.
Yeah, we just need a consensus, I think. Is that correct? Paul, Kevin?
Would you be consensus, wouldn't it?
If they're gonna be signing this letter that you say, I'll be voting.
Okay.
Okay, so is it on? For a vote? Is it on the agenda for a vote?
Since we just have it listed as discuss. Meet session. Playwork session, we can't vote on it. Yeah, just as discussed.
But we have two weeks to see what, if anything comes out of the.
See what comes out of the meeting.
So who's attending the meeting? It's on Thursday.
Mayor.
Oh, it's her daughter's birthday. Happy birthday, Tiffany, on the 27th.
We'll send Tom.
Yeah, there you go. Tom, we'll send Tom.
I'll be at another meeting. I can't remember if it's 10 o'clock or 2 o'clock. It's.
Mistress Court or the appraisal district?
Their board director, yeah, I've got their agenda pulled up.
Okay, okay, so yeah, it's, uh.
Is it, what time is it, Kevin?
3:00 p.m.
So.
3:30?
On 3.
3.
3.
On Thursday.
On Thursday, the 27th.
27th.
Yes, my daughter's birthday. I'm gonna have to pick her.
Well, I mean.
I can attend.
It's, it's an open meeting, right?
Yeah, I'm looking at the agenda right now.
I can attend.
I can make it.
Yeah. I mean, I think we should, there should be a presence.
I agree. I agree. If, if, if y'all are going and, um, and anybody else can't attend, can, is there some way we can get a report back on what you saw?
Yeah.
Give an update to Angie and she can send it out to everybody? Don't send everything. So, okay.
Is that meeting livestream?
Well, yeah.
Uh, I don't know. I'm so unsure.
So Kevin, you're, you said since we're voting on it, it does, I mean, since we're all signing and it does need to be printed on. And since it's not posted for a vote, put it off to the next, if that's, okay. So then we'll know what comes out of this meeting on Thursday.
Well, again, the Commissioners, no, the appraisal district doesn't meet bi-weekly, right? I would assume monthly, if that often?
Yeah, according to their meeting schedule. Turn it on. Um, yeah, their meeting schedule shows their 22, uh, their next meeting after Thursday would be February 24th.
Yeah.
Once a month.
So they meet once a month.
They would meet once a month.
They haven't had a chance to officially take action, so I would, yeah, I'm all for.
Yeah.
And they should be discussing this letter at the meeting.
Well, and.
Anything?
Let me, let me just tell you, the agenda they have posted.
It doesn't have it on the agenda.
Yeah, the agenda they have posted does not expressly refer to that letter. Um, they do have a, an entire section that they've labeled progress report. Um, they've got a special, well, it appears to be outside counsel, uh, coming to meet with them on director, uh, Board of Directors roles and responsibilities, Denton CAD's roles and responsibilities presented by department managers, uh, software update, uh, taxpayer liaison officer, and look back and look ahead for Denton CAD, in which the chief appraiser's gonna be, um, presenting that one. Um, it would appear that they're, those are pretty broad.
Is there, is there a section?
I wouldn't be surprised if there wasn't, given some of the content of the Commissioners Court letter, that some of that, some of those topics would prob, are probably gonna come up in that section of their agenda, I'd almost bet. But I mean, uh, obviously, I don't know for sure, but.
Is there a section that gives them the ability to have, to have a closed session?
Yes. They've got a, they've got a regular agenda item for, um, consultation of legal counsel, just like.
I would, I would bet that that's when they'll discuss it, closed session.
And what about?
Deliberation personnel matters, just as a general topic put in there.
What about our representative? Do we have an ability to have them tell us what's going on?
Well, we voted on, um, on the play devil, um, you know.
So there's not, there's not any particular that, that are.
Not ours.
Ours, okay.
Yeah. But I mean, we, we have a resident in Highland Village that's serving, newly elected, so, uh, he might be willing to come in and, and give that update. But they probably also have visitor comments.
They do, it's on there.
So it wouldn't surprise me any if, um, some of the cities don't make comments.
I'm gonna bet that any talk of investigation will be done in closed session.
Well, that, but if it's visitor comments, then I have a feeling that some, some of the cities would absolutely comment on, so, on the letter from the judge.
They have some of your cards.
Does school districts stick their nose in this as well?
Um, I don't know. I don't know. So, okay, so I think we have a consensus that we are going to see how the meeting goes on Thursday. We can put it on the next council meeting to send a, a letter, if council so chooses.
Okay.
Perfect. Got it? Everybody good with that?
Yeah.
Anything else? Anybody want, um, any upcoming agenda items?
Videotape or on, on or anything?
Comments?
I just have one question.
Okay.
Mr. Stevens, remind me again what the approximate timeline is for the master plan process overall?
It overall is a, an approximate 12-month plan, uh, based on when we started, looking at it. It probably October, November.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anybody else? All right. Well, if not, then we are adjourned at 7:54.